How's everybody? I would like to call the February 22nd, 2023 regular meeting of the Fenton Community High School District Wonderer Board to order. May have a roll call, please.
Figaro.
Here.
Hade.
Here.
Kovak. Lewis.
Here.
Radzinski.
Here.
Ragel.
Here.
King Palpon.
Here. And we have a quorum. Join me in reciting the Pledge of Legions.
(inaudible)
And as usual, James, please help us read the Fenton mission beliefs and Bison Way statements.
Our mission statement: Cultivate successful, passionate, and empowered learners through rigor, relevance, and relationships. Our belief statement: Successful, passionate, and empowered learners thrive when we provide a safe, caring, and welcoming environment, diversity, equity, and inclusion-unifiered community. School and home collaborate as one. We champion innovative teaching and engaged learning with state-of-the-art facilities. We infuse social-emotional learning into academics and culture. We prepare students to fulfill their civic responsibility. We immerse students in authentic life experiences. The Bison Way: Students and adults at Fenton High School create a safe, caring, empathetic environment where we believe in each other, respect diversity, communicate openly, grow together, and hold each other to high expectations to become the leaders and innovators of the future.
So next, we're looking at the public hearing on fund transfers. I would like to open the public hearing concerning the intent of the Board of Education to transfer $10 million of funds from the educational fund to the operations and maintenance fund. And we've discussed this previous meetings. The legal notice of public hearing was published in the Daily Herald on January 31st, 2023. Now, I will hand it over to Bruce to discuss the transfer.
Thank you, Ken. Just a couple of comments. I know the board's very familiar with what's happening here and the steps we've taken up to this point to execute this transfer. But going back to December, at the December board meeting, the board agreed to utilize $10 million in reserves to fund the water mitigation project that will address flooding issues in the district and on the district property. Subsequent to that, at the January 25th board meeting, the board reviewed the procedures to transfer said funds, which includes a public hearing, which is where we're at tonight, and later on this evening, an adoption of a resolution directing the transfer of funds. This will be the final action by the board that will be necessary to complete this transfer. So that resolution is on, as I said, later on the agenda this evening for the board to formally act on.
Thank you, Bruce.
Sure.
Do we have any public comments on this transfer?
No.
Okay. We will now close the public hearing of the fund transfer. We will now resume the regular meeting. And so, again, Rick, do we have any requests for public comments today?
No, sir.
Okay. Thank you. So then we go to recognitions, and item is for Dr. Benson.
Okay. Thank you very much. And as we bring in our chess team, if we could get to the next slide, please. Unfortunately, Aiden Torres isn't able to make it tonight, so we'll look to schedule him next week's, well, I'm sorry, next board meeting, next board meeting. So here, we have some nice photos here of the Fenton chess team, and here comes our state qualifying chess team. How about a round of applause? Okay. Tonight, we want to recognize the Fenton chess team who qualified for the IHSA state finals a few weeks ago. We'd also like to honor Ms. Downen and Ms. Bible here tonight. This marks the 16th consecutive year, that's right, 16 consecutive years, the Fenton chess team has qualified for the state finals. How about another round of applause? And so, what we're going to do right now is I'm just going to announce the, this year's players on the team. We're going to give you a nice certificate here. So just step forward, please. Drew Solsky. Emilio Sanchez. Brenna Ralston. Victor Ruska. Ademari Gomez. Alejandro Aguilar Carrera. David Severiano. Peter Schostek. And Casper Gritsch. All right. Thank you very much. And now, we're going to turn it over to Ms. Downen.
Mrs. Bible and I just wanted to say thanks to the board for all of the support and helping us to go to the state tournament this year. We also wanted to recognize Mrs. Bray and Mrs. Reinerson because they are always super supportive and helpful in getting our season underway. You already heard a little bit about how we did at the tournament, but this was our 16th consecutive year. We finished 12th of the 3A teams. Something that's unique about chess is there's no individual recognition. There's no ability to compete as individuals. There's no rankings as individuals. Everything is just a team result. But I did think we had some individuals that probably deserve some special recognition tonight. So Drew Solsky at Board One earned five points at the state tournament. Victor Ruska at Board Four won five and a half points. And then David Severiano, for the first time in program history, went 7-0 with seven wins. So yeah, thank you very much. We appreciate it.
All right. Yeah, come on out. Yeah.
Okay. So I'm really grateful for this opportunity that both my coaches have given me. Ms. Downen and Ms. Bible, I really appreciate you guys. Ms. Downen, giving me a bunch of lessons in chess. I couldn't do it without you. And especially, Ms. Bible, she's given me so many snacks, provided snacks to everybody during the tournaments, and that's super awesome. So thank you, guys.
Anyone else want to say a few words? Okay. All right. We're going to take a quick picture up front. Or do you want to come back? Why don't we come back here? Is that good? Since we're already here? Why don't we come back here?
Okay. Let's worry. Can't? Can't? You did the right thing.
(inaudible)
Okay. Excellent. Congratulations again to the chess team. Next, we'll get right into the informational items. James?
Sure. We have a full plate tonight. To start us off, we have Michelle Papa Nicolau, our Director of Post-Secondary Pathways in Career Technical Education. Michelle will talk about recent legislation related to college and career pathways, our new college and career platform, and opportunities we provide to our students in the area of work-based learning along with industry partners. Michelle?
Thank you, Mr. Antango. Hello, Board of Education. It's nice to see you all again.
It's nice to see you.
Thank you. I'm going to, we have a lot of updates. I'm going to try and get us through it quickly. I'll start with some of the boring stuff, and then we'll get into some of the more exciting stuff where I've tried to include a lot of pictures of our students in action. We've been up to a whole lot this year, and I'm looking forward to sharing with you everything we've done. So, just as a reminder, I think I've presented this at some point in the past, but we have seven Illinois College and Career Pathway areas that have been defined by the Illinois State Board of Education. And those are them, up on your screen: Agriculture and Natural Resources, Arts and Communication, Finance Business Services, Health Sciences and Technology, Human and Public Services, Information Technology, Manufacturing Engineering Technology and Trades. So the only thing I usually emphasize on this is, you notice, it's not just career, but it's college and career. All of these career paths can require education, and some of them don't. So we're trying to, you know, ensure that we're covering the gamut. So in front of you, I left a career guide for each of you. Our incoming eighth grade families all received one of these career guides when they came to meet us during freshman orientation, and we really like this guide. As you can see, if you turn into any one of those areas, it starts to tell you the types of occupations available with a high school diploma, with a certification, with an associate's degree, with a bachelor's degree, or a plus-bachelor's degree. So you get a sense of what kind of occupations and salaries and job growth and job demand there are in all of these areas. So we thought that this was a really nice resource for all of our families as they start to think about what they might want to do, what our students might want to do once they leave high school. What we also did is we've aligned all of our elective areas in those same seven areas into programs of study or pathways. And inside of this booklet, I put a pamphlet so you can see what we've done with our elective areas and how we have an intro class, a skills class, advanced class, and any related coursework in each of those specific career, college and career pathway areas. So. As a reminder why this is so important, is we have a really important mission here, and we've established this together over many years now. The mission of Fenton High School is to cultivate successful, passionate, empowered learners through rigor, relevance, and relationships. And we really feel like the rigor, the relevance, and relationships are all developed through this type of coursework and through these types of opportunities that I'm going to talk to you about today. So here's the boring stuff. Illinois State Board of Education, you know, we have a school report card. Well, starting next year, we've, they've already started collecting the data, but they haven't put it into the formula just yet because they've been waiting for schools to kind of get a handle on all of the indicators and how to collect the data. But the College and Career Readiness Indicator will be part of our school report card. And when it's on there, we will have students that are designated into two areas, either a distinguished scholar or a college and career scholar. And there's a number of criteria under each one of those. It includes GPA, attendance, SAT performance, accelerated or just college-level coursework in both of those areas. There's some slight differences depending on the GPA, but both of them do require that three career-ready indicators are met. So all the way on your right-hand side, there's, those are the career-ready indicators. It can be anything from a career development experience, an industry credential, military experience, dual credit, or other early college credit, 25 hours of community service, which is great because we already require that, a program of study, two or more organized co-curricular activities. So you can see, there's a lot of different ways that students can meet these indicators, but we will start, we have started, and this will start counting on our Illinois School Report Card very soon. Another important update from ISB is about our college and career pathway endorsements. So House Bill 3296 passed in May, and May 27th. This was actually a bill that was already connected to the Post-Secondary and Workforce Readiness Act that was passed in 2006. It just gave more guidelines and dates, and it gave definition and form to some of the requirements that were already in the act. So the first thing it requires is that we have an implementation of our PACE framework. And the PACE framework is just a series of college exploration activities, usually coming out of the counseling office. Then, in 2027, we have to, for our graduating class of 2027, we have to offer at least one college and career pathway endorsement to them. In 2029, we have to have another one. And in 2031, we have to have at least a third one available to our students. So what are these? I put a handout in your little packet there as well. An endorsement, for a student to earn an endorsement, it can go right on their high school diploma. There's some requirements. First, they have to have an individual plan. Then, they have to have professional learning. And the key areas in the professional learning is they have to have career exploration activities, 60 hours of cumulative internship experience, and at least two team-based challenges with adult mentoring. They also have to have a career-focused instructional sequence with at least two courses in the career area, and six hours of early college credit. So that can be a dual credit, an AP course, or an IB, but we don't offer that, and most schools in Illinois do not. And they have to be academically ready for non-remedial coursework, so they can either take a transition course, or they can have a certain GPA in order to get into certain classes at COD. So, not every student has to get an endorsement, but we have to have all of these factors in play in order to offer them an endorsement. So that's what we're doing, is plotting out and planning how we do this in each of those seven areas. Some areas were closer than others, and we know for, we know for a fact, by the end of next year, for our incoming freshmen, we'll be able to offer at least one like the law asks us to. There is, oh, they're making the rules right now on this, but there is an opt-out provision. Just so you're aware, Boards of Education can opt out, but when we're looking at all of the school districts currently applying for CCPEs, you can see it's not something anybody's opting out of right now. The one thing the Illinois State Board of Education asked us to impress upon our Boards of Education and our district administration is that the vision for this is not about quantity, but it's about quality for schools and districts. And they believe that by doing and offering these endorsements, we're only going to raise the quality, relevance, and authenticity of instruction for all students. And we're going to increase opportunity for all students to become proficient in those essential employability skills. All right. So how are we going to track all of this? How are we going to monitor all of this? Because it's a lot, there's a lot of requirements for CCRi, there's a lot of requirements for CCPE. So we have purchased and have been starting to implement and start to put together our School Links platform. So this is a comprehensive college and career readiness tool. It's not just for tracking CCRi components and CCPE, but our students will use this platform for signing up for their coursework, applying to colleges, doing lessons about colleges and careers, connecting with professionals, signing up for volunteer opportunities, learning about internship opportunities and other job opportunities. There's also an alumni database. So it's one of the most comprehensive college and career readiness tools that I've been exposed to in my career. So we're really grateful that we have the opportunity to work with them, and that we think it's going to help us quite a bit. And then, all students at Fenton should be on this by early fall next year. This February, our 11th graders will be onboarding, and our 9th graders will be onboarding in April. School Links. So what's the area that's probably the most challenging and that we're putting the most effort into right now in order to get prepared for these college and career indicators and the endorsements is our work-based learning continuum. So right underneath that work-based learning continuum, that's the ROE. Our Regional Office of Education is kind of using that as a framework, but the Illinois State Board of Education, under that, at the bottom of the page, you can see it starts as, starts with career awareness, then exploration, then team-based challenge, career development, all the way into pre-apprenticeships, youth apprenticeships, and apprenticeships. So that's kind of the continuum. And the thing that is probably the most challenging thing for school districts is the increasing intensity of employer engagement. Employers have a lot to do already. They're trying to run their businesses, they're trying to make money. To give their time to our students is an ask, but I'm going to tell you, we have wonderful partners, and we've done a great job working with our industry partners, and they are so committed to helping our students at Fenton, and I'm really grateful for their partnership, and we're going to take you through some of that right now. So here's the fun stuff. Now it's like rapid fire. Let's see what we can do. All right. So under career awareness, that first part of the continuum, you can do a few things in this area. First is just some career exploration. That's what School Links will do. Youth Science is another platform we have. Pathful is another platform that we have, where students can watch videos of people in different industries. And then we have the ASFAB, which is the career exploration program from the military. We're actually offering that exam coming up, March 3rd. And what the students get out of that is a comprehensive view of what careers they're qualified for. We also have been holding, we've held one job fair, and we have two more career fairs coming up in March. We've held a career talk series where we've had a number of professionals come in and talk during our lunch hours with our students in a variety of areas. You can see the flyer up there. I can't, I can't see it from here, but I hope you can see it. And those are some of the pictures. We had Mr. Torres, that's actually one of our teachers' husbands, and he is a business marketer. He was, he was great with our kids. We have some pictures from our jobs fair. And then up at the top, we have our very one and only, Mr. Radzinski. And Metra came to talk with our students. So those are just some of the highlights from our career talk series and our job fairs. Then we move into career exploration. This gets a little bit more intense. This gives students an opportunity, more than just an hour with a professional, but maybe a full day, maybe a number of multiple days. So right now, we're working with Grand Subaru, and every week, they take three of our students for a day in the life of the service department, and they, the students get to spend the whole day in the various aspects of their service department. And we've taken career tracks to Quest, we talked about that. And we have, we also have our students going over to Bensonville School District Two and Wooddale School District Seven once a week as part of one of our education classes, and they get to help out in the classrooms for an hour or so. So yeah, that's the picture up at the top. That's the principal from District Seven. And then, we also have discovery camps. So we sent, I think, two students to the Midwestern University 2022 Mini Medical School Camp. They spent the entire month of October on their Saturdays, going over for a full day learning about all the various aspects of the medical field. Northwestern Medicine offers one of those over the summer that we're going to help students apply for. And then there's a little one at the bottom about the University of Illinois Engineering. We're hopeful that our students will apply and be accepted into those programs. Okay. Team-based challenges. These are important because they're not just projects you do in the classroom, they're projects that you do alongside of industry professionals. They serve as mentors. They pose a problem. They're saying, this is what's happening in our industry, what are your solutions? And then they mentor the students to work through that problem. So our first shot at this was our Green Street Grill, which you've heard, our Burger Battle, which you've all heard a lot about over the last few meetings. We're also working with the Illinois Science and Technology Coalition. They help hook up students in engineering with companies like Caterpillar or Northrop Crummond, and they, those professionals from those organizations mentor our students through an engineering project. So we're starting to work with them. And Arbor, our food service company, our food service company here, is working with our culinary students on healthy menu options. So that, those are some of our team-based challenges. Another way our students get team-based challenges is through co-curricular activities like FCCLA. And we just, we are starting a brand-new club for the future health professionals. And one of the organizations that we're hoping to join and start a chapter for is called HOSA, and that will allow students to participate in challenges around the healthcare area. Okay. Career development experiences. We have a workplace experience program. It's called Internship. That's, you know, the general terminology for it. And then sometimes, we have embedded workplace experiences in our classes. So next year, our dual-credit Intro to Education class, our students will be going out three times a week to our elementary schools and working inside of classrooms. And then, those students who aren't in a class that has that, they are able to sign up for our Workplace Experience Program. And our Ms. Lauren Lem, who's amazing at finding placements, has students all over the place, and those are just some of them. You can see cloud fitters, a veterinarian hospital, a clinic, a pedic clinic, which I think is like a med spa, Trellia Auto, Meritool, At Properties, an orthodontist. So we have students all over doing all kinds of things that they're interested in. Finally, pre-apprentice, pre-apprenticeship and youth apprenticeship. The difference here is they actually get paid when they're in a pre-apprenticeship. So we are working with our Regional Office of Education and an intermediary called GPS Ed, and they help place students right now in two areas, instructional, sorry, not instructional, information technology, and in manufacturing and engineering. So they help get students and place them and guide them and support them through these pre-apprenticeships, paid pre-apprenticeships for as long as they want to stay in them. And many of our students stay in those jobs, and they get great benefits, and they get, you know, a great setup after high school. Apprenticeship is something we don't really dabble in too much because usually that is a full-on apprenticeship, and you usually have to be 18 years old. But we are doing school visits for places that help students get into apprenticeships, and we work with placement supports, like Project Upstart helps get our students ready for the exams for apprenticeships. And Intech Technical Institute, that's the electrical union, they actually have a great training facility that we're going to be taking the kids out to see how to become an apprentice. So those are all the fun things that we've been doing in all of those work-based learning continuum areas. And our next steps really are to create some coherence around what our post-secondary vision is, right? In these college and career pathways, there's no doubt that it's coming fast and furious from the state and with mandates, but we want to know, like, what is our real reason? Because it can't just be because we're told to. It's because we know that it's good for students, and we know that it's going to help them be more successful, be future leaders, have higher wage, higher demand, higher-growth jobs when they leave us. So we want to make sure that we have an action plan, and those are some of the components of the action plan that we'll work through. It'll either be the spring or into the summer. You know, having a shared vision and aligning some of our human and financial capital, making sure kind of everything's working together to help move this work forward. And then finally, we have to always be thinking about thanking our partners. None of this happens without them, and they're all committed to it. So last year, or not last year, but in the fall, we did our Industry Breakfast. We'll hope to do another one of those next fall, and I'm sure it will be bigger because I'm just out there meeting all kinds of people. And it's, it's been a great year, and we've had a lot of fun working with our partners and making new partners. Are there any questions?
Currently, how many of our students are participating in the programs? In the, in the, these different programs and...
Oh goodness, it really depends which one we're talking about. If we're doing internships, we have two semesters, about 20 students each. You know, I didn't even cover TCD, but TCD is a nice career preparatory program as well. I think we have 115 students sign up for that right now for next year. And the career talks, four lunches, about 20 to 30 each time, you know, about 100 students every time we do a career talk, and the fairs, we had a great turnout.
The job fairs, Michelle, the job fairs.
The job fair?
The job fairs was really well-received by our students.
Yes, yeah. And we have about 50 professional organizations participating in our jobs and our two, our jobs and our two career fairs. So all of the students have... And I'm sure it will be bigger, because I'm just out there meeting all kinds of people. And it's, it's been a great year, and we've had a lot of fun working with our partners and making new partners. Are there any questions?
Currently, how many of our students are participating in the program?
In the, in the.
In the, these different programs and.
Oh goodness, it really depends which one we're talking about. If we're doing internships, we have two semesters, about 20 students each. You know, I didn't even cover TCD, but TCD is a nice career preparatory program as well. I think we have 115 students sign up for that right now, for next year. And the career talks, four lunches, about 20 to 30 each time. You know, about 100 students every time we do a career talk, and. The fairs, we had a great turnout.
The job fairs, Michelle, the job fairs.
The job fair.
The job fairs was really well-received by our students.
Yes, yeah. And we have about 50 professional organizations participating in our jobs and our two, our jobs and our two career fairs. So, all of the students had the opportunity. It's right in the lunchroom, in the commons, so we had a lot of students come through, hundreds.
Thank you.
Ms. Hay, I think our, our approach is for all of our students, every single one of our students to be, to be not cognizant, but an active participant of career pathways in the future. This was, this, just a huge shout-out to Michelle, who has done a lot of heavy lifting in regards to this. Thank you very much, Michelle, for that. I mean, just imagine when this was dropped on us by ISB, hey, look, you got to have career pathways. About four or five years ago, we were like, okay, how do we do it? Give us some structure. But you see the expertise developing here. But this is very exciting, because we're bringing career and college in our building, and we're also going outside of our building. That's why I think it's, it's here to stay. It's going to be one of those foundations of educations moving forward.
And that's why I asked the question, because it is, it appears to be a very good program, and you want to make sure that all of the students are, have the opportunity to use the programs, the different programs. All of your good work should not go.
No, I, I think, I, I think we're finally getting to the point where our messaging and our structures will allow us to communicate this well during open houses and during registration season. We just, you know, we have to have all the components in place in order to offer these endorsements in a specific way. So, I know by next year, during open house, we'll be launching those pathway endorsements, for sure.
Thank you.
It is good to see this continue to move forward and develop like this. While canvassing, I heard from a number of former parents expressing concern or when it is, these types of programs are coming back, especially those that fall under CTE.
It was good. Told me it was coming, so now it's. See the follow-through.
And I only just scratched the surface. We did all the kinds of other things. But I only gave, I only had 10 minutes, and I think I went over.
Just thank you. Thank you for taking this on and, and developing this breadth of work that is going to be benefiting the students, especially in our community. I just want to make comments on, I'm just amazed, and you just touched on a little bit of it, right? So, the accessibility to different industries, different pathways for the kids, early exposure to all kinds of different job pathways, careers, apprenticeships, you know, college career pathways, so it's, it's really remarkable. When, when we look at how this evolves and begins to blossom, you know, are we, do we have ways to define success or metrics? What's our goal on that, like, as far as, like, you know, stage by stage? I'm sure you have that, yeah.
Yeah, you know, I, what we've started to look at is some of the National Clearinghouse data. And that gives us some insight into student persistence in college. Not only how many of our students are going on to post-secondary institutions, but how many are persisting. And I would really hope to see that as one of our indicators, that when students have purpose and when they know what their direction is, maybe, and have access to early child, or early college credit, that they actually persist at greater rates. So we'll be looking at that. But in addition to that, obviously, just the college and career indicators, tracking those indicators, making sure that we're reaching those, as well as increasing enrollment in the endorsement areas, as they could, as they're implemented.
Great, great. And then the, the other question I had is, well, two more. One is, how do we, you know, part of our strategy or goals is to have a more robust alumni association. And have we considered, or maybe you have already considered, how to tie that together as far as the after Fenton experience, and then alumni coming in and kind of staying connected? And I've got one more question after that, yeah.
Yeah, no, that's a great question. That School Links platform that I referred to, one of the important aspects of that program is it has an alumni component. So that'll help us not only just stay connected with them, but involve them into our programs through the School Links. Any partner, whether it's an alumni partner or whether it's an industry partner, can post jobs, they can post scholarships, they can post volunteer opportunities for students. So it's their direct connection to our students. So we're hoping that alone can help build and bridge that community from our alumni to our current students.
Is there a way to link previous alumni to that, or just going forward?
Yep, we're in the middle of implementation and trying to get everything set up. But once we, we can work with, with Rick and make sure we have our current list, and they'll download it right into the system. All of them can, will receive an invitation, but we'll probably have to do some outreach as well, to explain what the platform is and how it works.
Yeah. And the last question is, are we, do we have some type of initiative to, you know, I mean, obviously, we do probably email blasts and other things, our website to get it out to the parents, let them know, hey, this is something that, you know, Fenton's really offering, it's, you know, something new, and it's, we're excited to see that, so.
Oh yeah, we're trying to hit them from every angle. But definitely, when the School Links come out, that'll be part of the open house presentation as well, because everybody's going to have to know that. It's not only available to their children, but it's available to the families, which makes it yet another reason why it's so good.
Thank you, Michelle.
Yeah. Thank you. Thanks for your time, it was great to see all of you.
Thanks, Michelle. Let's give her another hand. Principal Benson is up next, and he will provide us a general profile of the Fenton class of 2027, and how we will assist and support their learning. He will also share our upcoming academic collaboration efforts with District Two. Afterwards, Principal Benson will provide more information about our upcoming German exchange event. Dr. Benson.
Excellent, thank you. So, we're going to just take a look at the class of 2027. Take a good look at that, that is the class that's coming in. We just finished registration for this group, so we're really excited to have them. We're just going to show some data, just to kind of give everyone a picture of this class. So we have about 347 students coming in. 58% qualify for free reduced lunch, so that's pretty consistent with what we have right now, approximately. So, pretty similar. About 10.4% EL services, 6.2 special ed services, and then dual-qualified students is about 2.7%. So if we look at sort of the pie chart, you could see about 80% of our kids are not S P E R E S L and remainder, or remainder, qualify for one or both. This is just our, our pie chart for free reduced lunch that we already looked at. This came straight from the school report card for either District Two or District Seven. And so you can kind of see, basically, we highlighted about 26.2% are meeting or exceeding in 2022. If you compare to 2019, sort of that pre-pandemic area, you could see that, and this is going to be a common theme throughout, that obviously, in education, we have some work to do with, with kids as far as, you know, meeting or exceeding the established standards. So like, for example, this one was at about 37% in 2019, and down to about 26%. So this is District Two in English, District Seven in English, a little bit higher, 33.8%, which is down from about 41% there in 2019. Math, you could see even more stark contrast with District Two at about 22% meeting or exceeding standards, down from about 31% in 2019. This is another metric that's on the school report card. About 15% of students were in an Algebra I, passing Algebra I in eighth grade. This is for District Seven, you could see they, the pandemic hit their heart in math. Also, you could see down from about 26% meeting and exceeding in 2019, to in 2022, about 12.4%. Their number is higher as far as those that are taking eighth-grade Algebra I and passing. So then we did our own, our own data collection, which we do every year, the PSAT for incoming freshmen. We had about 238 students take the placement test, which is about typical. Unfortunately, about 100 kids did not take that placement test. So, we don't have this sort of baseline data to, to use, whether it be for placement and courses, or to track growth over time. But you can kind of see the, the number there that they use is 390 in English and 430 in math. So, then we're going to keep moving along. This kind of breaks it down as far as students that, about 74 students greater or equal to 390, and then you could see a higher percentage was less than 390. Wooddale, a little bit better, as far as, of the kids that we tested, more were, were meeting standards than those that weren't. And this is in English. Next, we move on to math, and again, a, a pretty big difference here as far as who is not meeting, was about 143 at Blackhawk and 34 at Wooddale, and then those that are greater or higher than the baseline of 430, 35 at Blackhawk and 17 at Wooddale. So we, we put that all together, and again, this does not include the 100 that we didn't test, and probably a fairly high percentage of those kids were probably below standards, because they didn't come out to test. Most kids that are achieving at a higher level typically come out for the test. But basically, what we have is about 53% below that benchmark of 390 for English, and about 76% below that 430 benchmark in math. So what does that all mean? Well, what it means is, obviously, the pandemic hit hard in our communities. And I, I want to make the point that this is, these lingering effects that we're seeing here this year are going to be ongoing. So, that's why it's important that we program to make sure we meet our kids where they're at, to, for the learning loss that occurred, and also, social-emotional issues that, that have become apparent along the way. And so, and we know that, that there was some interrupted learning for sixth and seventh graders in particular. The needs are greater. But I think here at Fenton, as long as we focus on growing our kids, and that's something that we can do over time with this baseline group of 2027, is here's where we're at, what kind of growth do we see over time? Some of the programming that we have, the interventions that we have, we're confident that our, our kids are going to thrive here. So some more specific examples of support. We're really excited about this new initiative. And I know Superintendent Antanko has kind of led this effort working with the superintendent of District Two to get a more collaborative environment, particularly in math. We just saw the data, math is challenge, is especially challenging right now. It's not just our community, it's across the states, across the nation. But what we want to do is, is come together here at Fenton and have like a three-week, more intensive collaboration. Our teachers with their teachers, with younger students, so we can start to build that capacity. And especially, even with eighth graders, you could see it's in July, so that'll feed right into the school year, so hopefully, we give them a nice foundation for when they come in. Couple, review of some other interventions. We also have academic literacy, not just for English, which is what we've had historically, but also for math. It's almost like, like one day they're working on English skills, another day they're working on math skills. So we have approximately 70 students, so that, that data we're able to collect, we're going to have in, in that, this environment where they can get extra academic support. And basically, it's a class for them. And foundations of math, we reviewed that, how we've broken down our curriculum to, to, for students that are below grade level that need that extra support, breaking algebra into two parts, and focusing on those foundations. We have about 120 students enrolled in that program there. Then, of course, we have some of the old standby, obviously Bison Time, which is critical. And what we want to emphasize next year, we've already started meeting with our Bison Time Committee, is we want at-risk students reporting to these labs where they can receive assistance. Many times, it's AP kids, it's kids trying to go test corrections from like a C to a B, or B to an A. But what we want to do is program specifically so kids that are struggling are reporting there, maybe one day a week, two days a week. Right now, we are getting some, but we got to be more purposeful in what we're doing, because obviously, the stakes are high. And then finally, we've talked before, NTSS, the academic interventions that we have here, and the social-emotional interventions through groups and, and other programs. So, we're committed to supporting our, our students. We're excited about the class we have so far, the turnout's been great. Any, anytime we've had anything going on, there's high interest, people are excited, and we're ready to kick it off, so. Any questions on the class of 2027?
Yes, I, you said that there were 100 students that didn't come in and take the test. Is the test not required, or is optional?
So what we do is, we, we, we take it on a Saturday, and we obviously publicize, so everyone kind of knows about, and they come in, and it's a, they all sit en masse, and we do the PSAT test. So, it, it's kind of the suite of tests where you could see, okay, here's where you're at in eighth grade. And then ultimately, your junior year, when you're taking the SAT where it's required, then you can see, see the growth. So no, it's not required. But we obviously let, would like everyone to take. But if they don't take it, it doesn't necessarily change anything. It's just we have to collect that a different way on students.
Yeah, it would, it would give you a jumpstart, you know, if you, if you knew that student was struggling. I, you know, I can share a time where I had a student who at Blackhawk, that came in, transferred, one of my sister's children, transferred in from the city of Chicago, and he was failing everything. And there was a statement made that if he's, if he wasn't failing everything, we could assist him, and I didn't understand that. If you know what, if someone's failing everything, that's, that says that they, they need, you know, assistance. I mean, so is there any way that that could be considered, where it's mandatory, you know, to, to come in and get the testing done?
Or could you offer it during the school day? So that, you know, maybe there's an issue with getting a ride to school on a Saturday, or something like that, where is there a possibility that it could be during the school day for kids that couldn't make it on a Saturday? Or something to that effect?
I'll, I'll take the lead on that. That was one of our concerns here, when the results first came out, what happened to the other students. Our goal, Ms. Hayden and Ms. Rego, is 100% of our students take that test. One of the interventions where we were going to make sure it happens next year is either we go there and test all the students, so we don't miss anybody, or they're not, we don't miss them coming over here, or we bus them over here to Fenton High School. And I know I've been talking to Kate about that a little bit. You want to say some like Kate, of some possible plans we had for next year?
Yeah, I, I mean, we've been talking about that for a while, but that's something that we're looking at, is trying to figure out. And both of the feeder schools are open to that, bringing the kids over here, and then thinking about how can we expose them to the career pathways and things like that? Maybe they can tour the school. But, the other thing is, the PSAT 89 is great, and we love to have that data, but we do have data on the other 100 kids, we're not coming in blind. So they have MAP scores, or IAR scores, we also do articulation with the teachers. So, we do, we do have data, this is nice for us to have, so that we can see longitudinally. But it's not that we're walking in, like, oh, they walk in, we don't know where to place them. So, we would love to have all the PSAT 89.
A registration requirement could be considered? Like, part of the registration is that, I don't, you know, I don't know if that, that's possible, but.
Well, and even if we don't, maybe, even if it's not the test, we could have a screener, or something like that for registration, where we could have, definitely get some data right away about kids. Yeah, I agree with you.
It's a good thought.
It's nice, but we're a public school, we can't say no.
Right.
That's right.
If they don't take it, we can't say no to them, we're a public school.
Right.
It's that simple.
Right, and I showed some of the, obviously, their school report card, they had their mandatory tests that they take in middle school, and that's. tests that they take in middle school, and that's what Kate's referring, that there is some data. But it is helpful, I mean, because this data flows nicely right into the data that we're going to collect down the line. So it
I know you, Dr. Benson, you touched base a little bit on, you know, the effects of COVID on, you know, social, emotional, mental health, probably suffering from trauma based on loss and and just the historic event that just happened, just not too long ago. When when we look at the 100 kids that didn't take it, is this an all-time low? How does it compare to other years?
It's a good question. It's about the same, honestly. Pretty similar, right?
So so we've been managing with this type of levels?
Yeah, that's right. Exactly. Yep.
I don't know if this is related, but with the PSAT and ACT, those types of exams, test-taking skills, because the more you see it, the more you're adjusting, ready for that. And I don't it's something that I was exposed a lot to developing those types of test-taking skills. And do we offer anything along those lines to assist the students with that?
Great question. And that did hurt us during the pandemic because we couldn't really get we had that before, and then we had the pandemic, and it was hard to get kids together. But we did bring that back this year. So we do have groups after school. We also have an online option with support where kids can work on preparing for the SAT, and it's free, which is nice because we all know there's programs out there, but it's $200, $300, $400. Not everyone can afford it, so.
And is it every year? Because I know sometimes it wasn't every year here.
Yeah, we brought it back this year, right? So last year
Every single year, they I mean, it's every year that you have it for the
From here on out, yes, starting this year, we plan on on having it. Because we need an option for kids. We saw our low-income options. We want to make sure everyone has access to that. And some kids like online just for that because they like to prepare on their own. But we know not everyone prefers that method, so those are more in-person, working on English or working on math. And so we have that running right now.
It's definitely helpful because there's a skill to doing these tests.
There is.
There's sometimes little
It's a lot of tips and ideas. Here's how you approach it instead of just rote memorization type stuff. It's it's important.
Just just finally, I just know that it's difficult for a student to start behind, you know, and then have to catch up. So that that's, you know, that's just
Right. And it's really not their fault, right? And so that's why we've spent a lot of time, and Kate's done a great job, and even Michelle also, working with the different
She's helped.
Yeah, well, well, she has done great work in this area along with Kate. But working with these different divisions and how do we adjust what we're doing? Because we don't want to fall behind. We know some kids are we have to differentiate more. We have to meet some kids where they're at. And math, as you can see, can really, I mean, math, more than anything, either you get it or you don't, and it builds upon itself. And so when a kid comes in struggling, like you're saying in math, and if you just come in and say, okay, here's where we're supposed to be, here we go, and then you got kids here, and it's like not connecting, but but we're doing a lot better in that area, and we're understanding that. And so I think those are all part of the components that we need to be cognizant of and that, you know, this is just kind of the new normal, and we need to adjust. And we'll be fine because everyone's in the same situation. So
I would I also would wanted to say like words of encouragement because, you know, it looks like we're being proactive and reaching out and extending our resources here at the district to the other districts, our feeder schools, our, you know, tri-district partners. And we're trying to hedge this a little bit. It looks it sounds to be. Is that correct?
Yeah, exactly. And I specifically mentioned James because I remember when he came in, he was meeting with Katie, is that her name? Yeah, with Katie over at District Two. And they have some grant funds, and we have some grant funds, and it's like, let's make this work. So and the math teacher, our math teacher, really excited about it, which was great. It's like, yeah, bring them over. And so I think we can learn from each other. It's a little different having fourth and fifth graders running around, but people like me that have four sons, I'm used to it, so I I'll be fine. Bruce might get a little nervous, but but we'll work through that.
It's strategic. We got to get them in here early. Fourth grade, we started real long, this is number one. You can see that acronym many, many times, MTSS. If there's a deficit here, our energy has to be here. We're offering before, during, and after-school tutoring. Now, we're educating students during the summer. We just have to because of that deficit difference. So we know the challenge ahead of us, we're committed to it, and we just can't give up hope on it.
Yep.
All right.
Okay.
Anything else?
Yep.
Thank you, Dr. Benson. Next up is Mr. Barago, our Division Leader of Math and Science and
Hold on a second.
Oh, I forgot. Yes, yes.
Wait a second.
Too quick.
Yeah.
What's going on here?
An authentic Bavarian
V-gates.
Nice, yeah.
Yes, sorry. I've been looking forward to this all day. So anyway, we're going to talk about our German exchange program. Thank you, thank you. It feels different, too. I feel like ready for oh, is she are we taking pictures? Anyway, high interest in our exchange program in Germany, over 40 students were interested. And so right now, this is going to happen, folks. So I'm here to tell you that our partner's school is the Leibnitz Gymnasium in Rottweil, home of the Rottweil dog, if you've heard of that type of dog before. Yes, that's where they came from, I guess. So we're looking at about a two-week trip, somewhere between mid-June, we would go. A more reasonable likely number is probably about 20 students in chaperones. We're in the process of working that number to 20 because, you know, there's more interest in that, but we'll see what the criteria is, and we're working on that. We're also working on finding host families eventually because once we go there in the summer, they would come here in the fall. So we're looking for about 20 families that would would host some German students. The other thing that's reassuring is there's this organization called called GAP, the German-American Parent Program, a government organization in Germany, and they help facilitate this exchange. So this isn't just myself and the principal and at the gymnasium figuring this out. It's an organized system where we apply. There's also scholarships that our kids can get to help to defray some of the costs. We're also looking at some fundraising opportunities. But yeah, we're really excited. Lorenzo Rubio, you've probably you've met him before. He's our multilingual program director, and he's really taking this on doing an excellent job. So there'll probably be more updates as we get closer, but this is sort of our first, you know, formal bringing this to the board.
I have one question.
Sure.
Where did you get the hat?
Kate came through. Her husband's German, and so
I might have
Our team takes care of me when it comes to my props. I don't I don't always have a prop handy, but they come through when when we need one. So
Well done.
Yeah, good question. Any other questions?
Sounds a great opportunity.
Yes, they're excited. Kids are really excited.
It's an experience of a lifetime.
Yeah.
It's amazing.
Exactly. So, all right. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Benson. All right. Sorry about interrupting you. Up next is Equity Report with Mr. Mike Barago for this month's Equity Report.
Good, I think I still have the clicker.
Hello, everyone. My name is Mike Barago, and this is your Equity Report. Let's kick off this report with our commemorative observances and holidays. This report will highlight conference presentations, recognitions, Black History Month events and activities, and Delt updates. In case you missed it, our very own Dr. Jim Batson was recognized on the December 2022 issue of Tech and Learning. The article, How One EdTech Leader Supports Equity, highlights the many ways that Fenton High School leverages technology to meet the needs of our students. Congratulations, Dr. Batson. On January 21st, I had the honor of partnering with Dr. Ved Dubio and representing our district at the Illinois Association of Latino Administrators and Superintendents Educational Conclave in Oprah. Our presentation shared our equity journey at Fenton High School that played a role in the increase of students taking AP courses, the changes in our grading practices, the growth and strength of our Student Voice Initiative, and more. During the presentation, I highlighted the importance of walking the talk and receiving the support we need from leadership and our Board of Education in order to make meaningful changes. We are fortunate as a school district to continue to advance our equity efforts and effectively provide students the support that they need. The Diversity Committee and our Black Student Union have partnered to celebrate Black History Month by highlighting Black excellence and history. On January 31st, BSU took the time to decorate our windows with quotes and various images. In the art, Ms. Wright has provided a space for students to use their creativity through a grid method paintings of faces of prominent Black Americans. For the entire month, students read announcements of our influential figures to highlight major contributions by Black people that are often forgotten in the history books. On Wednesday, February 8th and 22nd, BSU and Film Club had partnered to celebrate Black History Month through films. The group selected From the Rough and Monster for their screenings. On Saturday, February 11th, members from BSU and Ignite visited the Illinois Holocaust Museum, where the Negro Motorist Green Book exhibit is currently being showcased. For those unfamiliar with the Green Book, it was a metaphor for freedom. It helped guide Black Americans to thousands of businesses for over 30 years. In an era of Jim Crow laws and sundown towns, the Green Book offered critical, lifesaving information and sanctuary. Big shout out to Ms. Flo Brock and Mr. Simon Sanchez for making this possible for our students. On Tuesday, February 21st, our jazz ensemble led by Mr. George will conclude our month-long celebration by welcoming students in the morning with music. We will also have beignets for students to taste us in celebration of Bad Tuesday. Our Delt strands are continuing to make progress. The System strand led by Dr. Batson is in the process of reviewing its first set of policies to ensure gender-neutral language. The Teaching and Learning strand is currently executing its goal of diving into the culturally responsive teaching and learning standard leading standards led by our instructional coaches and Ms. Kate Ward. The Professional Learning strand led by Ms. Stephanie Jackson will be offering staff a six-week viewing opportunity of the 1619 Project series on Hulu. The strand has also continued its podcast programming through the Podcast Club. Our Equity PD cohort of new teachers and admins have completed seven trainings since the beginning of the school year. The group has two more sessions that will be held in April and May to complete their baseline DEI training. Lastly, the Professional Learning strand is providing opportunities for staff members who want to take their equity journey to the next level by sending a team of teachers and administrators to to the Northern Illinois University's Social Justice Camp in June. The Family and Community as Agency strand led by Ms. Michelle Rodriguez is in the midst of planning for our May 4 Equity Advisory Committee meeting, where we will combine forces with Padres Unidos and Polish Parents Group to celebrate Polish Constitution Day. Last but not least, our Student Voice Climate and Culture led by Mr. Jason Madel is making strides in learning from our students and creating action plans through our four-strand structure. The strands are Climate and Culture, Diversity, Student Learning, and the Principals Advisory Group. The Principals Advisory Group is a space for students to share general information. The Climate and Culture strand is currently addressing student concerns regarding vaping. The Student Learning strand is currently discussing and learning about students' experiences regarding grading practices. And the Diversity strand is in a process of action planning to address hate speech. That's a wrap for our Equity Report. Until next time, have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Barago. Any questions there, comments? Okay. Moving on, real quick, summer school dates, just wanted to let the board know, usually summer school takes place semester one in June, semester two in July. Okay? Fenton Foundation is next. As you all know, creating a Fenton Foundation is one of our strategic planned goals. We have met this goal in moving forward. Rick Cambick, our Director of Communication and Community Engagement, however, he's Mrs. Timmons today, will provide us the latest Foundation news. Rick?
All right. So as we talked about last month, relationships out in the community are important. So as you see right here, this was the September 11th Remembrance Program we did last year. And the VFW in Wooddale, post 2149, participated in that event. And we've also had our students out in the community performing for for different holiday events. They came across some additional funding and decided they wanted to make more contributions to the community and decided to approach us. And they said that all of our children are a community value and a community asset, and they wanted to donate $1,300 to our school for us to choose what we feel is the best use of that money. So that will they'll be for the foundation to decide how to how to proceed. But we are now up to $21,300 balance in the Fenton Foundation. And we would definitely want to celebrate the VFW at the appropriate time. That was very generous of them to to think of us.
Thank you, Rick. Up next is Mr. Jose Hara Milo, our Assistant Superintendent. He will review the press policies we discussed last month. Jose?
Thanks, Jen. So, you know, we last last month at our meeting, we discussed four policy-related changes or updates that were developed by press. At that point, you know, we recommended and we talked about, you know, all of these different these different things that that are brought up by press. The only one that we did not recommend adopting was that six-two-two-twenty, bring your own technology, as that's something that Fenton has done for over a decade now, provide technology for students, one-to-one technology. So we recommend adopting all the policies except for that one, and you'll have the opportunity to vote on this during the discussion and action items.
Up next, FOIAs. We received two FOIAs. Both FOIAs have been resolved. First FOIA is from local labs requesting teacher salaries, and the second is from Mr. Larry Anzalone regarding doc pay. That concludes our informational items.
All right. Thank you, James. Let's get right to consent agenda. Excuse me. So do we have any questions or comments regarding the, excuse me, consent agenda?
Just real quickly, I've as you read my email, I've informed the board earlier that two staff members have submitted their resignation and retirement. They are now uploaded on board books, and you also have a hard copy in there. Just wanted to make sure you are aware of that.
Any questions? Okay, shall we vote? May have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved. Second.
Got it? Okay, can I get a roll call?
Rego?
Yes.
Figaroa?
Yes.
Hayden?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Red Zinsky?
Yes.
Ting Pao Pong?
Yes, and the consent agenda passed, motion passed for that.
Thank you. Board, just real quick, we have our new athletic director in the house coming today, Mr. Pedro Rodriguez. Let's give him a hand and applause. And Pedro, can you say something?
My name is Pedro Rodriguez. I'm honored and excited for the opportunity to serve as a Director of Athletics and Division Lead for Physical Education at Fenton. I was raised in Elgin, attended Elgin High School, and have a deep understanding of the Upstate Aid Conference. I bring a decade of experience working in two Chicago schools in various capacities. My passion and purpose in education centers on providing our students with opportunities, skills, and knowledge to best prepare them for life after graduation. It is with this experience and excitement that I plan to serve our students, athletes moving forward. I can't wait to immerse myself within the Fenton community, build genuine relationships, and continue to cultivate academic and athletic excellence. and continue to cultivate academic and athletic excellence. I look forward to seeing all of you at our events. Go Bison.
Pedro, thanks for coming. Is that your wife there? Do you want to quickly introduce her?
Yes, of course. My wife, Taylor.
We go to discussion action items next. And so we start with the resolution for adopt fund transfers. So may I have a, well, we're going to go through it. So may I have a motion that the Board of Education adopt the resolution of Community High School District Number 100, DuPage County, Illinois, directing the transfer of $10 million from the educational fund to the operations and maintenance fund. We went through that already, so.
I'll make that motion based on our past discussions.
Second. Okay. Can I get a roll call, please?
Rego?
Yes.
Hade?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Red Zinski?
Yes.
Figaroa?
Yes.
Ting Palpong?
Yes. Yes, definitely. Motion passed. And next is the Field House Door Replacement Bid. If no further questions, we'll go ahead and.
I have, just for further clarification, it was that bad.
It was that bad?
Because.
It was triple.
I tell you what, I don't know if waiting is going to work, but I'll defer to you because I'm hearing that from a lot of places, including my full-time job. We're lucky we could even find doors, from what I'm being told, let alone triple. And I know this is one of our safety items.
Right.
I'm going to defer, but I don't know if we're going to do better the next time, unfortunately, in the world we're in.
We were estimating between, and an architect was estimating anywhere between 200 and 300, they're coming at 900.
I'm not surprised by that, and I'm just happy we could find doors. I really am. It's pretty bad out there right now.
Understood.
There's a major supply chain problem with doors, for sure. The contractor meeting, the construction meeting, said that maybe a longer lead time than was anticipated. I think the architects, as to your assistance with the bid process, were utterly shocked at how much it came in over what the estimations were. So they strongly suggested, in the weak degree with the recommendation to reject the bids and go out into the fall earlier with the hope of getting more bidders and better pricing. So that's kind of what we're recommending, go risk, and reject the bid.
I don't think it's going to hurt. I just hope it doesn't go up. I really, it's a rough world out there right now, and I get it, and we want to be frugal, but we also need to get the work done. I know this is an action item on the safety side, so, I mean, I'll defer to the recommendation, but if it comes in bad again next time, I think we're going to have to bite the bullet because it is not a pretty market out there. And I'm just happy they could find doors. Because I know at my other job, they're not finding doors, or cars, or trucks. So this is the world we're living in, and we're going to have to pay more. But I'll defer and hope we can do better, but I wouldn't be surprised if we don't.
As far as doors goes, do we have a timeline on, you know, is there a cutoff date for getting it if we don't get it now?
We have some flexibility there, so they're not hard and absolute dates, but they just want to see progress, and we are in progress with some of the other things.
Okay.
Thanks, John.
Yeah, we have a motion that the Board of Education not award the project and close this bid.
So moved?
Yep. And second?
Second.
Okay. Can I get a roll call?
Rego?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Red Zinski?
Yes.
Figaroa?
Yes.
Hade?
Yes.
Ting Palpong?
Yes. Motion passed to reject the project. Next is the 2023-2024 NEDSEC Classroom Lease Agreement.
Sure, I can take that. As you all know, NEDSEC stands for North DuPage Special Education Co-op. They rent a room, classroom, from us every year. The numbers are increasing in those classrooms, and they will rent two rooms this upcoming school year. There's going to be a bubble of number of students that have increased the class size in those, in that program, so they will be renting two for, at least two or three or four years. We charge $15,000 per classroom. All of these, all of their students are from Bensonville or Wood Dale, so they are our students. So for the motion, the total price would be $30,000, so $15,000 per each classroom.
That's money into us.
Money into us, yes.
And we have the space.
We do have the space, yes. And they are also, they compensate for their teachers, this is not coming from our hard money here at Fenton High School as well. It's really a win-win situation if you think of co-ops. It's engineered in a way so that students with accommodations or with needs are cared for in a much more economic means.
Yeah. Win-win's good. All right. So may I have a motion and a second to approve the NEDSEC lease agreement as presented?
So moved?
Second.
Thank you, Leo. Thank you, John. And Rick, can we get a roll call, please?
Rego?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Red Zinski?
Yes.
Figaroa?
Yes.
Hade?
Yes.
Ting Palpong?
Yes. Motion passed. Next, we look at the IASB Press Policy Recommendations. And we went through that earlier. Do we have any questions on that? Pretty straightforward. So then, may I have a motion, the Board of Education approved October 2022 IASB Press Policy Recommendations as presented and discussed at the Policy Committee meeting held last month on the 25th, January 25th, 2023, except for Policy 6220. Can I get a motion and a second?
So moved.
And a roll call, please.
Rego?
Yes.
Red Zinski?
Yes.
Figaroa?
Yes.
Hade?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Ting Palpong?
Yes. Motion passed, and we breezed right through that. Let's get to committee reports, starting with the Bensonville Community Foundation from January. Was there, no, was there a meeting?
It was January, yes. Nothing related to report. I do know that the Bensonville Community Foundation does always give a scholarship to the students at Fenton. I know that they are going to continue that this year. I think it will be one. Last year, they did give two. I believe that the number will be $750 for one student in the field. They must play a musical instrument, I believe. So I don't know when, I guess I would speak with the counselor, I'm not sure how that works, how they get the information, how students get the information on that.
Student counselor, yes, Ms. Wright.
To their counselor. So, but that would be the difference. Instead of two, there'd be one.
Perfect.
And the amount is $750.
So now that we have the Fenton Foundation with the Bensonville Community Foundation, because I wasn't at the meeting in January, support or give a donation where it's not a requirement to have music, but a donation to the Fenton Foundation, is that?
Sure. One, go ahead.
No, you can go first.
One foundation can give to another foundation, if that's the case. I just wanted to give Ms. Wright and Mrs. Hyde a heads up. Our German exchange team will fill out an application, a grant application for their German trip to the Fenton, the Bensonville Community Foundation. The exchange team is working very hard to fundraise, but some of our students will need some assistance, so we'll be asking you and your board if they could support our Fenton students to go to Germany. Just a heads up.
So that would mean that a mini-grant form would need to be filled out?
Yes.
And will you be doing that at the next, for the next meeting, or would that be something in the future?
What would you recommend, Ms. Wright?
I would recommend, I would recommend filling out the mini-grant form, maybe for the March meeting.
March, okay.
Yeah.
We'll get that done. Dr. Benson?
Yeah.
We'll get that done.
Yeah. The sooner the better.
Yes.
That's what I'm saying.
Thank you.
Yeah, they need it before June.
Yep.
Yeah, so I would, yeah, I would recommend sooner.
Yeah.
Because we only meet every other month, so.
Thank you. The Board DI Committee, me and Sylvia will be meeting to go over that, probably by March.
Yes.
Yeah. The Finance and Facilities Committee, do we have any news on that? Anything to report?
Just that we will have a Finance Facilities Committee meeting in March.
In March, that's right. Okay. Policy Committee, we did that last month, I think, so I think we're good there unless we have anything else to add. We just voted on adopting that. ISB delegates, so I think that's Juliette now, right? You're the delegate.
Yes, I am. I did it one time, and now it's me all the way.
But I can assist.
So would it be, would it be me now for the entirety of the year because I did it? Okay, yes, it is me.
It's good.
I'm feeling very, very especially.
You are the woman for the job.
Yes.
It's perfect.
Okay.
Yeah. I can fill in if you'd like.
Well, what do you need from me?
No, just a report, so I could just.
Well, yeah, help me out.
Okay, I can speak to, well, one thing is, you know, so the superintendent evaluation's coming up, and I don't know if you guys noticed your emails, but there's an implementing and effective superintendent evaluation process, you know, kind of a webinar of some sort that's hosted by our association, it's February 23rd. So if you don't see that, it might be a good thing to look into it because we're right up there at the season. So I guess I would urge you to look into it, encourage you to. And then we've got the March 30th National Convention coming up, so that'll be a really good development opportunity there for us. And is there anything else? That's it, right? Yeah.
That'd be it.
That's enough. So let's go to the next report, which is Lend.
Meetings tomorrow at 8:00 AM. I'm sorry, on Friday, on 8:00 AM. We will be present.
Okay, great. Last is NEDSEC. We kind of went through that. Go ahead.
Yep. Just thank you, Board, for renewing the lease for NEDSEC. Once again, these are our students that live in Bensonville and Wood Dale that we are assisting real close to their homes, so thank you.
Great. That concludes the committee reports. Our next board meeting is Wednesday, March 22nd, and it's at 7:00 PM again with a tentative Board Finance Facilities Committee meeting scheduled prior to that. Regular meeting time is 6:00 PM. And so next, we'll go into a request for closed session. So may I have a motion and a second to go into closed session? And I'll read this paragraph again, I know John loves it. Session for the purpose of the appointment of employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee of the public body or against legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity. However, a meeting to consider an increase in compensation to a specific employee of a public body that is subject to the local government wage Increase Transparency Act may not be closed and should be open to the public and posted and held in accordance with this Act 5 Illinois CS 122(c)(1). Also, the purpose of collective negotiation matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives, or deliberations concerning salaries, schedules for one or more classes of employee 5 Illinois CS 122(c)(2). May I have a motion and a second to get into closed session?
So moved.
Sorry.
You can have, you can have. I'll second.
Sylvia's second, Leo's first. Roll call, please.
Rego?
Yes.
Figaroa?
Yes.
Hade?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Red Zinski?
I need him to repeat that.
I'll just say ditto.
Yes.
Ting Palpong?
Yes. And you guys want to take a quick five before we come back? From closed section.
...
And I may give motion in second to adjourn.
I'll move.
Second.
Sylvia. Mary? Oh, I may give a roll call.
Regal?
Yes.
Louis?
Yes.
Radzinski?
Yes.
Figaroa?
Yes.
Hade?
Yes.
King Pao Pon?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Mary?
You know...
Yes.
You know another thing that I have found out since...